And good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, October the 6th, 2020. We welcome you here this evening for our meeting. As we normally do, in just a few minutes, we will go to a moment of silence and then we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to salute our country. Before we do that, I would like to do a couple of things. One, I'd like to go ahead and call a roll and get everybody that we know who is here, and then we will go into that here in just a few minutes. We'll start out with all our members here in the room. Councilmember David Stevens here, Councilmember Ralph Presswood, Councilmember Todd Perdue, myself, the mayor, Councilmember Ike Perkins, Councilmember John Beal, City Manager Scott Hildebrand, Public Information Director Joshua Harris are all with us this evening, and we'll have some guests in the audience we'll be talking to in a few minutes. Now, I will call the roll of those that are on the virtual Zoom with us, please. Chrissy Thomas?
Ready.
Okay, thank you Chrissy. Ben Willis?
I'm here.
Thank you Ben. Hope you all are enjoying yourselves. Now, we'll go down the list. Shirley Cannon, our city clerk. Don't know if she's here anyway. TJ Rohr, our city attorney.
I'm here.
Thank you. Radford Thomas, Public Utilities?
He said he's here.
I'm here.
Public Works Director? Is he here?
He's there. Yeah, I see him.
Katelyn Horn, Main Street Downtown Development?
I'm here.
Okay. Kenny Storey, Recreation Director?
I'm here.
Yes, sir. Jenny Wheelock, our Plant Director?
I'm here.
Thank you. Chief Phelps, our Chief of Police? He's here, yes sir. Chief Hare, our Fire Chief?
Hi.
Does that get everyone that's here?
Here.
Thank you, sir. Is our news topics, anyone here from the news topic with us? Don't hear anyone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think, did I leave anybody out that's on? Okay. Before we go to our moment of silence and our pledge, I would like to ask you to keep in your thoughts and prayers, Councilmember Todd Perdue and his family, the loss of his wife Catherine's mother on Sunday, Florence Jones. So, we want to keep Todd and all the family in your thoughts and prayers, please, over the next few days and weeks as they work with their loss of Catherine's mother. And also to Mayor David Barlow and the loss of his brother Roy Barlow over the last day or so. We certainly think about Roy, was married to Reba, who worked for the city for many years downstairs in our water department. So, we will, certainly, they were great people in our community. We'll miss them. And our best to Mayor Barlow and his family during this hard time. So, thank you for that. And right now, please, we'll go ahead and stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have a special recognition that I will get to in just a minute. As we go to that, I would like to make a couple of comments on some recognitions we had over the past week. To promotion in our Lenore Police Department, to Sergeant Martin Crisp, who was promoted to Sergeant, and we congratulate Martin for his hard work and time and service with our police department. I know Martin will do a great job. Comes from a great lineage of police and his family, Terry Crisp being his father, former chief here in Lenore. So, we are proud of Martin for that. And in the Lenore Fire Department, we have a promotion, firefighter Brian Fagan was promoted to firefighter with our fire department, and we would say congratulations to him and hope that he will enjoy his time, that he's already been with the fire. I think he's moving up from part-time to full-time, but we're honored to have him serving our city in our fire department. So, proud of those gentlemen for their promotions with those departments. Also, we'll mention, congratulations to Mr. Ben Willis, our council member. Great article on Ben in the Southern City this month, and we appreciate Ben's hard work, and he serves with the League of Municipalities Board Directors and many other things across the state. And Ben's been a hard worker since he's joined our council in here in our city. So, congratulations Ben on the fine article, and I hope everyone has had a chance to read that in Southern City. So, that was a great thing. We enjoy that. So, right now, we have a special recognition. I'm going to go down and recognize someone who has served our community for a number of years. Twenty-three. And I'll ask the Honorable Richard Hedrick if he will join me here. And we have a resolution honoring Richard for his long and faithful service as a member of our Lenore Planning Board and many other things. And Richard, we thank you. I had the honor of serving with you on the planning board for many years, and I know you served not only on our planning board, and other things we'll read about in just a minute, also served on the county planning board, too. So, you did some double duty for us. We appreciate your long tenure on our board. You've made a lot of great things happen in our city and community, and we really appreciate that. I'd like to read this proclamation and resolution presented to you. Resolution honoring Richard Hedrick. Whereas, Richard Hedrick has served faithfully and diligently as a member of the Lenore Planning Board since 1997, when he was first appointed to serve as extraterritorial representative. And whereas, Richard Hedrick went on to serve as a regular member of the Lenore Planning Board, as well as a member of the Lenore Board of Adjustment, and recently was also an inaugural member of the Lenore Historic Preservation Commission. And whereas, Richard Hedrick during his 23-year tenure as a board member, has served with great competence and made important contributions to a large variety of land development cases, including the adoption of a comprehensive plan, amendments to the Land Development Code, rezonings, conditional use permits, variances, conditional zoning districts, and other planning projects. And whereas, Richard Hedrick is being honored and recognized for his volunteerism, devotion to the community, and his commitment and his hard work. Now, therefore, being resolved that the Lenore City Council hereby expresses sincere appreciation to our friend and colleague, who through his leadership and dedicated service to the city, has earned respect and has made lasting contributions for the betterment of the city. Be it further resolved that I, as mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lenore, and on behalf of the city council and all citizens, do hereby extend sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Richard Hedrick for his devoted and outstanding service. This the sixth day of October 2020. Richard? Thank you. Congratulations to you very much.
I appreciate it.
I've got one more thing, and then we're going to shoot a picture or so. And for your long and dedicated service to our city for so many years, I would like to present you with a key to the city. And say thank you for all that service. Highest thing that we can do from anyones to give them a key and say thank you. This is a key to your city, a city you helped build and help grow and expand and become a better place for all our citizens live. So, I'll present you this.
Thank you so much.
Say congratulations to you.
I wasn't expecting all this.
Well, we appreciate your service to that.
I would like to, please, I would just like to thank the Planning Board Director Jenny Wheelock and her staff. They are doing a tremendous job, and I think, I hope all of y'all realize that and know what all they're doing. Thank you.
We do. Jenny, I wanted you, if you can, make some comments, if you will.
Yeah, I wanted to be there in person, but I wasn't feeling very well earlier, so better safe than sorry. But, Richard, thank you for your kind words, but also for your service. You know, somebody like me that comes into a community not being from here and having to learn everything, my board members like Richard really helped me understand the history, and I think it's so great that we do have folks that'll stay on that long. So, I was recently going through some files on a conditional use permit from 2002, and I saw Richard in the minutes, and I thought, man, he's still doing this and contributing to our city. So, thank you, Richard, and you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you Jenny. Let's, if we will, let's go to the council. Y'all come in right here. Don't have to come down. You can just move in, and we'll move back this way if that's okay.
Let's open this up, and then we can hold the key in this, or the mayor can hold this.
Childproof.
There you go.
That log is really strange.
That's adult, huh? Go around.
I need one of those at school for my house.
The kids can open this.
Well, that's right.
You need to work on the cut off.
Tighten up just a little bit, I'm sure.
Come on in, in the back there. I could see you want to go this way, son. And then, I've lost Ralph. I can't.
All right. I'll look around just a second.
All right, right there. All right, one, two, three.
Say cheese.
Say cheese. One, two, three.
Look back at these pictures later.
I don't want to share with Paul.
Those were the last. Have a good night.
That's an odd way to have to do things, isn't it?
You see, he had the key. He can leave where he wanted to.
I see on there, I missed somebody on there. Donna Bean, our Finance Director, is also here, and I'm sorry that I didn't do that. My Public Information Officer forgot to give me my full list, so I'm blaming him.
Go ahead, man, to the boss.
But anyway, Donna is also with us, and thank you for Donna for that. Didn't mean to leave you out. You're a very important part, for sure. Okay. We'll move on. Let me get back on my agenda here. I've lost it. Come back up. Thank you. All right, we'll move on, and we do it. Tonight, we have an annual audit report, our FY 2019-2020. Eric Bowman, PA, will present our update on our city's FY 2019-2020 Annual Audit Report. Eric, welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you very much. You got no, just try to stay awake. No, everything's good. Great news this year, just like it was last year. But if you've got your schedules here, there's about four pages we're going to go over. On that first page, which is page 21, is a statement of revenues and expenditures for all governmental funds. And we're just going to concentrate on that first column, which is the general fund. And if you'll notice, if you go all the way down to the bottom, three lines up, you'll see net change in fund balance positive $960,000. Almost a million dollars we've increased fund balance this past year. A lot of that was due to expense cuts. Donna did a super job, and so did all the department heads, and obviously showed up, which brought our total fund balance to $12.3 million. So, if you'll flip over, we'll try to kind of dissect that fund balance where it'll make a little more sense to you. On page 19, which is a balance sheet excluding capital assets and long-term debt, here again, just looking at the general fund, all the way down to the very bottom, two lines up, you'll see total fund balance, which is our $12.3 million. But the number I want you to concentrate on is that next number up, which is unassigned or unrestricted fund balance of $10.4 million. That equates to 58% of expenditures in fund balance, or about seven months of expenses and reserves. In most cities, if they have three months' expense and reserves, or 24%, then they feel real good. And you may remember, not too long ago, we were thinking, if we could just get to 24%, you know, we've got it made, you know, we're not going to be able to do any better than that. Well, here we are, at 58%. So, our fund balance the last three or four years has just done this. So, which is just obviously outstanding. Page 100, the third schedule, moving to a revenue expenditure schedule for water and sewer. The local government commission expects all your enterprise funds to make money, and this one obviously did again this year. In the third line down, you'll see revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.4 million. So, that might sound easy, but it's not. That water and sewer, getting it to a profit is easier said than done. I know most of my municipalities just struggle trying to get to break even. So, just to point out how good that looks, and this is piggybacking with the, last year when we had another $1.4 million increase. So, water and sewer did super also. That's the last thing I'll look at, as we always talk about the city's long-term debt. If you look at the next to the last column, 2020, you'll see that our total debt that the city has is $21.7 million, which increased about 3% due to our bio solids project. But as we've said before, out of that $21 million, 64% is at 0% interest, or about $14 million of that we're paying no interest on. So, our interest costs are really extremely low for that kind of debt. And of course, you have to have that debt with all the water and sewer projects that you're in. You just can't pay those off as you go. So, you know, last year, I said that this was the best year that the city's ever been in since we've been auditors, and so this is just to echo here. We're actually better off this year, obviously, than we were last year. So, just not a lot of negatives. I mean, Donna has done a great job. Her staff has done a great job, and they're easy to work with, and really makes our job easier. The auto report's actually 140 pages. It's way more complicated than it should be or needs to be, but I hope that gives you kind of the gist of where you're at. If you've got some questions, we'll do our best to answer it.
Good. Any questions of Eric concerning our auto report or anything in our financial world?
Whatever you've been doing, you've been doing a lot right.
Thank you.
Keep it up, you know?
We appreciate all our hard-working staff. Donna, as you mentioned, of course, and all those involved, Mr. Hildebrand, and what he does in leading everyone. And all our department heads, who've done great jobs of using the money wisely.
Absolutely.
Making good decisions on things, so.
Well, and sometimes people say, why do you try to build such a big war chest? Well, with what we're experiencing now that we've never experienced before, I think we're very glad knowing what the state budget uncertainties are, what our budget going into the next fiscal year might would be. It's a great position to be in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your work in helping us confirm that.
Yeah, that's a good point. You wouldn't want things to be tight right now.
No.
Going into so much uncertainty. So, yeah, yes, it's great that you have that kind of.
We never know when that time's going to come, and something could happen anywhere.
We're very blessed that the hard-working staff and support has paid off, that we're in a comfortable financial position going into this uncertainty period.
Right. We appreciate. Anything else? Any comments, if anyone? Eric, thank you.
We appreciate all of you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, consisting tonight of minutes of the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. Item B are closed session minutes. These are from the council meeting of Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, as reviewed by city council, our city attorney, and the city manager. I hope everyone has had a chance to do that before tonight. I know they were sent it to you. Item C is a closeout. This is a capital project budget ordinance for the Bernhardt Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvements Phase Two. This is to close out the Bernhardt Water Treatment Plan Improvements Project, and we adopted the capital project ordinance on January 16th of 2018, and the project was completed on September 30th, 2020, at a cost of $9,039,576.24, and was $1,010,423.76 under budget, which is really fantastic. Item D is a closeout of the Rural Building Reuse Grant. This is for UNC Healthcare. This is for authorization to close out this building reuse grant for the city of Lenore for that UNC Healthcare Behavioral Health Facility. This project was complete as of September 3rd, 2020, with total expenditures of $500,000. There was no excess funds. And item E was for the resolution presented tonight to Planning Board Member Richard Hedrick for his service of the city of Lenore for over 23 years on the planning board and the community. So, that's items A through E. I present to you for any question and/or motion concerning the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items A through E as proposed.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to accept the consent agenda item as presented, items A through E. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and that is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. And we will move on then for requests and petitions of any citizens. Is there anyone, no one? Okay, thank you. That's with us this evening. We do not have any reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, first let me go back and extend my thanks to Donna Bean, Finance Director, for the auto report, as well as department heads. They do outstanding job managing their budgets on a day-to-day basis, and it takes a team to make it happen. And just want to thank all of those folks for that report. For items for information this evening, several things. You have your 2021 holiday schedule in your packet, and also your 2021 council meeting schedule. Typically, we have council bless that meeting schedule for 2021, and normally get a motion to do that. So, it's kind of in the report, but if you want to go ahead and adopt that or consider that, then I'll continue on.
Okay. You have the council meeting schedule and the holiday schedule as presented in your packet. Is there anyone who has any questions of that, or?
I did. I had a question.
Yes, sir.
There was, I'm trying to get to it, but there was one date that was in highlighted in blue, and I just wondered what the significance of that particular meeting was.
Give me about two seconds if I can get this.
Maybe the day after Easter.
I guess it was anticipation of a blue meeting that night.
You had a blue meeting?
That's a Monday instead.
Well, now, he's colorblind, so he doesn't really know what he's talking about.
I just noticed it was.
There was some question about that color.
I'm seeing New Year's Day in red and everything else in black.
It's the meeting in April, on Monday, April the 19th.
It's because it is a Monday.
Okay.
And we're doing it that way because of Easter? Is that?
There's something that day, maybe the league or something. There's something on that week that had to be moved to Monday.
Okay.
I'll have to go back, and I can verify that for you.
That's fine.
Curiosity more than anything.
Yeah, it was just a highlight to make sure you realize it is a Monday, not a Tuesday.
All right. Any other questions, or? Then I will entertain a motion that we approve the 2021 holiday and city council meeting schedule as presented by staff.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Councilmember Perkins to approve the schedules as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and that carries unanimously. Mr. Hildebrand, go ahead.
That's because City Vision is scheduled, the league meeting is scheduled that week.
Okay.
And it may or may not, based on COVID.
May not happen. Well, we don't know yet.
But that's the schedule.
Got to take it in consideration.
So, that's why that's there. The ABC Board meeting will be held on Thursday, October 8th at 2:00 p.m. And that's going to be electronic meeting. The LBAB, Lenore Business Advisory Board, will meet on Thursday at 6:00 p.m., and that also will be an electronic meeting. The City County Services Committee will meet on Monday, October 12th at noon, and that will be, I guess, a virtual meeting, but also a live meeting. I think it's going to be, have both, in case folks do want to attend. The Cobble County EDC will meet, an electronic meeting, on Tuesday, October 13th at 8:00 a.m., and that'll be a virtual meeting, as I said. Parks and Rec will meet, their advisory board will meet on Monday, October 19th at 6:00 p.m. Will be rec, that's a live meeting. And early voting begins Thursday, October 15th, and runs through Saturday, October 31st, and that's from 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Cobble County Resource Center, also known as the library, and that'll be on, at 120 Hospital Avenue, and that's the lower level of the building. Early voting will also be held on Saturday, October 17th, and Saturday, October 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then again on Saturday, October 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So, if you want to have early voting, you can contact the County Board of Elections, and they can help you with that as well.
Is there a voting site in Granite Falls as well? Is that right?
That I do not know.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was one. There has been in the past, but it wasn't mentioned, so I wondered about that.
I think Shirley was focused on Lenore.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we'll never, we won't be displaced from having our meetings here due to voting anymore.
Since early voting will be held at the Resource.
Since the Board of Elections is right.
Correct. And tonight, you have one item for action. The National League of Cities Meeting, City Summit, is going to be held virtually. Mayor Gibbons, City Attorney TJ Rohr, and Councilmember Ben Willis have all signed up to be a participant in that event, and they need to go back and have a, I guess, a delegate and an alternate for voting purposes for that meeting. So, you want to, Mayor, lead that charge? You get someone?
Yeah, that'd be fine. We'll, we do need to have a voting delegate and an alternate delegate for it. I guess, since it's only myself and Councilmember Willis, we can, we could be whatever. If Ben wants to be the voting delegate, that's okay. I really want to do that.
All right, I'll make a.
Yeah, I'll back you up. I'll back you up.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mayor Gibbons as delegate and Ben Willis as the alternate delegate.
Okay. You heard the motion then, that I would become the voting delegate for it, and Mayor, Councilmember Willis would be the alternate for that. If no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Mr. Hildebrand?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. We will move on then to any recommendations from our city attorney. Mr. Rohr?
Couple matters for closed session.
Okay, thank you. We'll get into that in just a second. And I do have a couple of board appointments to present to you tonight. We presented these originally at our September 15th meeting. Would like to recommend to you tonight a reappointment for the ABC Board. That is Dr. John Ty for a three-year reappointment to that board, and two new members, Marta Lazow, to appointment on the planning board, and Margaret Forney to the Lenore Business Advisory Board. Hopefully, this will catch us up on our board appointments right now that we've been working on for some time to keep, get everybody moving and in the right direction. These will all have agreed to serve, and I think they will all be great members to our different perspectives. And I've talked to the, those who lead these boards and about these appointments, and everyone seems to be excited about that. So, I'll make that to you in a form of a recommendation for the appointment and reappointment of these board members. We'll need a motion to, for that.
Mayor, I know that we approve your recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Presswood makes a recommendation to approve the board appointments and reappointment as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. We appreciate that, and we will contact these new board members, and Dr. Ty about his reappointment to these boards. So, thank you for that. We look forward to continued good service from all our board members. And of course, tonight, we honor one who served for 23 years. So, it's great to have people that are that dedicated to be a part of our, our community. All right. Do I have any reports or recommendations of any of our council members at this time? Anyone have any thoughts of anything going on out in the world? Okay. All right, all right. So, we do have a closed session tonight. This is pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, subsection 11, subsection A, subsection 3. We will enter into these closed session meetings to discuss attorney-client privilege. I do need a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Perkins makes a motion to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? I think everybody voted for it, and we will go into closed session just a minute. Of course, you will need to. Of course, you will need to re, for those on virtual, you'll need to go to a different.
Zoom.
Zoom, thank you. On that, so.
We zoom.
All right, so we will, we don't expect anything to come out of this for vote, Mr. Hildebrand, do we? Okay. All right, so we will go into closed session as soon as everyone's ready.